Meeting of the Princeton Planning Board. It's Thursday, April 4th, 2019, and the opening statement is as follows. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the 2019 Agenda Resolution of the regularly scheduled meetings of the Princeton Planning Board. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and is to be maintained throughout the year by transmitting a copy of such schedule to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and Comcast Media. A copy has been filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 7th day of December 2018. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution appeared in the December 14, 2018 edition of the Princeton Packet. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Capizoli? Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Oakman?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sax?
Here.
Mr. Stankiewicz?
Here.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Mrs. Gunning?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Ms. Spala? We have a quorum.
Thank you. You'll notice in the reading of the roster of members of the Planning Board, there are a few changes. We're welcoming Mr. Oakman to a position as a regular Board member tonight, and we have a new alternate, Andrea Spala, who's down there at the end of the podium, and they will be joining us from now on. I also had a few announcements. On Wednesday, let's see, on Wednesday, April 17th, at 7:00 in the evening, there will be a neighborhood meeting at the seminary. This is at Erdman Hall, and it's on the redevelopment. On Monday, April 29th, ZARC, that's the Zoning Amendment Review Committee, will be meeting at 9:30 a.m. in the Community Room. And on Friday, May 3rd, at 10:00 in the morning, the Ad Hope Committee will be meeting in the Community Room. This is, again, the seminary redevelopment. Any other announcements? Anyone? All right. Right. Our attorney would like to swear the people into their new positions.
I'm going to swear the three of you in all at once. Jeffrey, Alvin, and Andrew, if you could just raise, if you could stand and just raise your right hand. And I'm going to read you the oath of office, and I'll stop every phrase or so, so you could repeat it. Okay. "I," and then state your name.
Alvin McGowan.
Okay. "solemnly swear or affirm that I"
Solemnly swear or affirm.
"that I will support the Constitution of the United States"
Support the Constitution of the United States.
"and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey"
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
"and that I will bear true and faithful allegiance to the same"
Bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
"and to the government established in the United States and in this state"
And to the government established and to this state.
"under the authority of the people, so help me God"
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
"I do further solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully"
I solemnly swear that I will faithfully.
"impartially and justly"
Impartially and justly.
"perform all the duties of the member of the Planning Board"
Perform all the duties as a member of the Planning Board.
"to the best of my ability"
To the best of my abilities.
"so help me God"
So help me God.
I thank you.
The next thing on the agenda is a report of the Nominating Committee. As most of you will know by now, Gail Ullman has retired after 20 years on the Planning Board, and we need a new vice chair. So, Mr. Sienkiewicz, can I call on you to do the nominating committee report?
Absolutely. It's with great pleasure that I'd like to say that the Nominating Committee met and unanimously recommended that Louise Wilson be nominated and voted on tonight as our vice chair. So, thank you.
And Greg, do you want to move for nomination, then?
I'd be happy to. Please, I'd like to move that.
And then, do we have a second for that?
Second.
Any other nominations?
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chris Carey. Congratulations.
I just want to say a couple of words about Gail without it sounding like a eulogy. She was such a pleasure to work with and serve with, and she was so steady and knowledgeable and fair-minded, and I cannot imagine filling her shoes, but I will do my best, and I feel honored and thank the Board.
All right. Since we both have microphones and a vice chair, we can move on to the hearings. So, the hearing for tonight is Landwin Development Corporation. This is continued from last month, and it's a preliminary and final major subdivision and site plan with variances. It's for 725 and 823 Herrentown and 915 Mount Lucas Road, Block 1001, lots 1, 2, and 14. I'm going to ask our attorney to go over the game plan for this evening.
Just to lay out the procedures, and they're in accord with the way we usually handle things. First, the planner, in this case, Dan Dobremelski, and town staff will give reports. No interruptions. Planning Board can ask questions after that. After that, the applicant will make a presentation. No interruptions. Witnesses will be sworn in. The experts, we're going to give them 15 minutes each. That's somewhat firm, but somewhat aspirational, so, you know, there is some flexibility built into that. Then, questions by Planning Board members, cross-examination by any other attorneys present. Then, there'll be affirmative presentation by any attorneys for third parties. Expected there'll be objectors. Again, the witnesses will be, testimony by the experts will be limited to 15 minutes. Again, there's some flexibility built into that. But redundant testimony by experts is to be avoided, and that's a normal rule in court, and here as well. After that, cross-examination by the attorney for the applicant, questions by Board members, then comments and questions by members of the public not represented by counsel. If they're represented by counsel, they'll speak through counsel. We've always imposed a three-minute limit on that, and we will continue to do so. Members of the public will be sworn in and must give their full names and addresses, and then, after that, will be Board deliberations.
All right. I think, Mr. Dobremelski, you're on.
Good evening. I'm going to go over here, and we have a couple of boards, so we're going to start with that. I'll be providing testimony from my December 30th, 2018, report.
And Dan, I'm going to swear you in. If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed. And could you mark that exhibit as Exhibit PB1, and then, when you get to it, just describe what it is?
You want me to do both of these exhibits?
That's a good idea.
PB1 is called the Cluster Plan, prepared by Princeton Junction Engineering, dated And below it is, you want to say PB2? PB2 is called the Conventional Subdivision Plan, also dated April 4, 2019. The parcel of land that's the subject of this application is 90.62 acres, bounded by Herrentown Road to the south, Montgomery Township to the north, residential homes on Mount Lucas and Herrentown Lane to the west and east, and the Stone Hill Church is located on the south side of Herrentown Road. The site slopes downward from the southeast to the northwest generally. It exhibits a variety of topographic conditions. Approximately 20 acres of the site exhibits steep slopes greater than 15%. Most of those occur in a 400-to-500-foot-wide band through the center of the track. There are significant flood zones and wetlands occurring on the unnamed stream and drainage tributary of the Van Horn Brook, which flows from the south to the north through the western quarter of the site, but it includes a lesser branch that extends towards Herrentown Road and Bun Drive intersection. It is estimated that 9.25 acres, about 10% of the site, is constrained from development by flood areas. The EIS, the statement in the application, indicates that 6.79 acres, about 7.5% of the track, has been designated wetlands and verified by an NJDEP Letter of Interpretation in 2016. The buffers on the wetlands, some of the wetlands have 50-foot buffers, and some of the areas are described as open waters with no buffers. It is a total of approximately 16 acres, or 17.5% of the site are constrained by flood and wetlands and buffers combined. The majority of the site is heavily wooded, including a variety of the species you would expect to find in this area: ash, beech, birch, oak, et cetera. But there is an area of approximately 15 acres that is flatter and either open or vegetated by less mature trees in the southeast corner of the property, and that's associated with an existing homestead property. The application, the majority of the property is located in the RA zone. A small portion towards the east of the property is in the RB zone, and about one acre of the track fronts upon Mount Lucas Road and is zoned for RO-1. The applicant has demonstrated that, I'm going to go to PB2, the applicant has demonstrated that 20 single-family residential lots with a minimum size of four acres could be established by a conventional subdivision and road layout, including the extension of Herrentown Road. They are proposing a cluster subdivision design, so I'm going back to PB1. The cluster design is intended to avoid disturbance of a major portions of the environmentally constrained lands and sensitive areas which are to be preserved as open space, and it's their proposing development of 30 residential lots on the flatter portion of the property. Residential clusters are an alternative pattern of subdivision to smaller lot sizes to allow for innovation, conservation, lower costs, more efficiency for delivery of services, reduced need for blasting, convenient recreation, integrated bicycle and pedestrian circulation, and the creation of a desirable visual environment. The municipal code permits residential clusters in all three of the zones on this property, but they are subject to specific standards, and the Planning Board must make specific written findings on these six standards. I'm not going to read them, but they're in the report. I will note, so my comment 2D indicates that one of the findings needs to be that the residential cluster will not have an unreasonably adverse impact upon the area in which it is proposed to be established. This evaluation shall include reference to the natural resource inventory. We're asking that the applicant provide testimony in support of the proposed plan's consistency with the intent and required findings, the required six findings. That should be included in their testimony. The municipal code standards for residential clusters include optional density bonuses. These bonuses, they're taking advantage of three options. The first option is if they have more than 70% set aside for common open space, 71% is proposed, they are afforded a 10% bonus, which would be two additional lots. They are taking advantage of a bonus for providing 1,000 linear feet of walking paths. 5,000 linear feet is proposed. It's a 10% bonus, two additional lots, above what the conventional would have been. They are proposing to dedicate a three-acre parcel to the municipality for affordable That affords a 30% bonus, or six additional lots. So, the residential cluster neighborhood that they've proposed and is shown here on PB1 will include 30 single-family lots with 64.25 acres, or 71% open space, 5,000 linear feet of walking path, and a three-acre parcel dedicated to affordable housing. The applicant is asked to clarify the open space calculation because portions of the open space will include detention and some utility service lines, and there are some limitations in the code for that, and so we're asking the applicant to give the specific numbers regarding that. The Board must also determine that the clearing and permanent alteration of the environment, the natural environment associated with the utility easement elements, does not present an unreasonable adverse impact as noted in Comment 2D above, one of the specific findings that I read to you. So, for the detention basin, you can see what they're showing is clearing to construct a berm to detain the water, the stormwater that flows off of the property from the new development in this direction. So, one determination would be to clarify that you don't feel that that constitutes a detriment to the natural environment. The applicant should, we're asking the applicant to describe the areas to be disturbed or cleared to construct these elements, and to what extent they will need to be perpetually maintained as turf or stabilized surface to facilitate the function and maintenance of these areas. We've questioned the potential to add additional meadow or woodland, edge habitat, and create some greater diversity by the fact that you have cleared these areas when that occurs. So, there is the possibility that we could turn the, what might be perceived as a detriment into an asset, if you look at it, that the, end up with a permanent meadow instead of what would have been a part of woodland if it would just been preserved. We also suggested that the Board review the proposed sidewalk and any trails through the open space, which is one of the density bonuses. So, you should take a look at that and make sure that the Board is satisfied with that. I'm on to comment three now. Speaking of the subdivision plan, under the cluster subdivision plan, the new local streets will be measure approximately 2,775 linear feet, which is 65% of the road length of the conventional subdivision plan. That equates to about two acres of paved surfacing when you account for the width of the proposed street. The sidewalk is another 5,000 linear feet, or another half acre of paved surfacing. The residential site improvement standards in the State of New Jersey govern for this, and under a conventional road design, they would be permitted to have a road which would be 20-foot in width with sidewalk on one side. That would be the conventional subdivision. If you measure out the amount of paved surfacing for that design, it actually would be slightly less than what they've proposed with the cluster at this point for actual paved surfacing. However, they are proposing slight upgrades of the road design width, and they're putting sidewalk on both sides of the road, which is what carries it over those numbers. So, that's what makes it so that it exceeds what the conventional would have been if the conventional was implemented under RSIS standards. But I do ask that you recall, there were other purposes for clustering, to allow residential elements to be designed and constructed at a lower cost per dwelling and, per dwelling unit, but also lower cost for streets, utilities, and other improvements, and as a municipal government, if these become public streets, the ultimate repaving or reconstruction of those at some point in the future. So, by having it smaller, it reduces costs. It also reduces the amount of blasting or other subsurface disturbances required for street utility installations, and it also affords for the protection of environmentally sensitive lands. Under 3C, we discussed the option of connecting the two loops. So, what the, the cluster subdivision design will include, an entrance road in off of Herrentown Road, which will be divided. That road is divided under, because RSIS standards require that. They have more than 25 residential units and only one means of ingress and egress, so they're required to have a divided road for the entrance into this subdivision. The, excuse me. So, the, one possibility that I suggested as an option would be the potential, or asking why they did not pursue the possibility of just making this a loop road instead of a cul-de-sac. The cul-de-sac option allows for some open space and potential walkway that cuts through the middle of the subdivision, which is, could be perceived as a bonus, but the creation of two cul-de-sacs makes it so that when you do have services, they will have to travel slightly longer distances to cover both streets. These are relatively minor details of the subdivision, but they're characteristics that should be understood as you review it. The residential lots that are being proposed under the cluster will measure approximately one-half acre in average, ranging from 21,261 square feet to 33,092 square feet. The proposed lots have been situated upon the least environmentally vulnerable lands on the track in accordance with the code's requirements. These lots will be approximately one-half the size of the 11 lots on the adjacent Herrentown Lane lots. However, the code requires that a minimum 40-foot buffer offset between these uses is required. They have actually proposed a 100-foot offset. Within that 100-foot offset, they have not proposed any landscape improvements. The Board may wish to require a buffer area to be landscaped with predominantly evergreen tree plantings that would be five foot in height with continuous, and continuous within two years, or a fence in accordance with the code's standards. The new residential lots will be served by public sewer and water services. The community, the municipality master plan includes two items that should be discussed or reviewed. One is the extension of Bun Drive through the parcel to Montgomery Township. So, your master plan shows the potential to, it actually shows two routes, I believe, to extend Bun Drive through the parcel. It should be noted that there really is no point in Montgomery to go to, but that's what the master plan shows. It also talks about, the master plan also talks about bike paths. Bike path is shown along the south side of Herrentown Road. It appears that the bike path has been constructed on the east side of Bun Drive, stopping at the intersection of Bun Drive and Herrentown Road, but not along Herrentown Road frontage of the church property on the south side. So, the bike path does not presently exist in this area along the frontage of this property. The applicant has proposed dedication of 4.6 acres to widen the right-of-way of Herrentown Road, but there is no widening or bike lane construction indicated at this time. We're asking that the applicant provide testimony regard, also regarding the location of the entrance drive on Herrentown Road. There are two kind of slithers of wetland that occur on either side of the entrance drive. They've been designated as ordinary wetlands with no buffer, which is, allows them to kind of get that air, the road through there. The existing driveway for the homestead occurs slightly to the east of that driveway, but that area was not chosen for the new road. Instead, they've chosen this area, so we're asking that there just be some testimony about exactly why they decided to put the road in the entrance point where they did. It's offset from Bun Drive, but they are not showing the location of the driveway into the church across the street. So, we ask that they provide some testimony regarding the location of the drive and why it was chosen to be in that location. The applicant should clarify the ownership and maintenance of the open space lot and any improvements, including the stormwater management basin, the pipes, as well as the new local streets, the median island, et cetera. So, the question for the Board and the applicant is who ultimately is going to own the roads, who's going to maintain the roads, as well as the utility elements associated with those roads. The plans indicate that all existing structures and dwellings and barns will be removed. This includes an existing dwelling on the affordable housing lot to be conveyed to the municipality. It is noted that a stone driveway from Mount Lucas Road is shown on the adjoining lot for the dwelling on this property. So, there's actually a driveway that's off of the parcel for the, for the house that's on that property. So, the question is what's going to happen to that driveway? So, we're asking the applicant to address that. Going to go to landscape now. With the, the, there's a tree location plan provided on, in the drawings. It depicts the location and size and species of approximately 1,900 existing trees that are present within or near the areas of disturbance to construct the roads and utilities for the subdivision. It's not the houses, just the roads and utilities. The existing trees on the new lots have not been located with this submission. The plans indicated that 682 mature trees will be removed to construct the roads and utilities. The existing trees to be removed will range in size from eight inches to 36 inches in diameter, but we do note that only 12 of those trees will measure greater than 25 inches in diameter. As I said, they've really tried to cluster into the area with the least amount of environmental To have conformance with municipal code standards for tree clearing mitigation associated with the subdivision, infrastructure construction, as well as the development of the individual lots ultimately must be clarified and resolved if the subdivision is approved. So, they just have to show how they're going to conform to the code standards regarding tree removal. We also ask that they clarify who actually performed the tree survey, because that's not provided on the, on the plans. The new landscape, they are proposing to plant 121 new street trees at approximate spacing of 50-foot on center along both sides of the street and within the median strip island at the entrance drive, and we're suggesting that the street tree planting should be reviewed by the Municipal Shade Tree Commission and probably the Landscape Subcommittee as well. There are some concerns about the species selection, and there's nothing wrong with the species they've selected, but as a municipality, there should be some review relative to the overall species in the area and trying to avoid monoculture or other problems. Also, I'm now on 4C in the report. A significant portion of the stormwater basin will encompass preserved existing woodland. So they're building a berm and then preserving the woodland in the water storage area. The berm will have extensive graded embankments in order to put that berm onto the slope that's there. So there will be some clearing of existing trees, but it's not extraordinary compared to what you could end up doing if you cleared a much larger area for the basin. However, there are no landscape plantings associated with the basin. There is some potential that there could be some additional landscape added as part of the mitigation for the tree removal and associated with that basin. Likewise, there's the potential that some additional trees could be added in association with the utility lines that are built along that as long as they don't conflict with the utility lines or the drainage swales in those areas. The final two comments were that there's no signage indicated for the residential subdivision on the plans and that there are some minor comments on the specifications on the landscape plan. It is suggested that the landscape plan be reviewed by the landscape subcommittee for final review and approval. So that's the testimony. If you have any questions.
All right. Board members, do you have questions for Dan? I think we also want to hear from the staff. Would you like to hear from the staff first? Okay. Mr. West, Mr. Bridger, we have your report and...
Okay. Dan covered a lot of the items in our report.
Jack, if you could raise your right hand, I'm going to swing it in. Do you swear, excuse me, or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So sworn or affirmed?
Okay. Dan did cover a lot of the issues that we addressed also in our report. One of the, one of the bigger items is we had indicated the need for a variance or waiver for the size of the cul-de-sac island. Our ordinance calls for a 60-foot radius. The plan is proposing a 50-foot radius. We had a lot of discussions back and forth with Jerry and staff and the applicant. And basically, the RSIS residential site improvement standards overrides the municipal ordinance, and that's for a 50-foot radius. So basically, the, they don't need that variance because the residential site improvement standards governs in this case. So one of the other items, Dan had mentioned, the master plan shows a bike path along the northerly edge of Herentown Road. We looked at it, and the concern was the likelihood that that will ever get built because it's, it requires, it's an eight-foot bike path that would extend. And here, it's wooded. As you get further to the east, there's a lot of existing houses there, and putting an eight-foot bike path in front of those houses is always problematic. But the big reason is the, the southeast corner of the property is primarily all wetlands, and that bike path would have to go through those wetlands. And I don't, I'm not even sure you could get that permit as a general permit. It would probably have to be an individual permit, very difficult to get because you have to show alternates. So what I would propose is that, and what I'm asking is that the applicant widen the road to a width of 30 feet, and that requires widening each side of the road to provide a five-foot bike path on each side of the road. And then they would mill and overlay the entire road from Bun Drive to heading east to the end of their property. It's a lot less tree removal, a lot less impact on the environment, and it's something more likely that would happen to get a bike path ultimately down the entire length of The, we had a lot of comments on their stormwater detention basin, most of them technical in nature. None of them are deal killers. They would be able to meet all those conditions. I don't see that as a problem. That covers the majority of the major items. I don't believe the applicant will have any objection to any of the conditions listed in our report, but I'd like to hear from the applicant on that.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Bridger, did you?
Well, after Jack and Dan's summary...
Yeah, Derek, if you could, let me swear your nose. If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony about you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So sworn or affirmed?
Thank you. I don't have anything to add at this point. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but thank you.
Okay.
May I ask a quick clarifying question about the bike path, or is that for later?
Let's just get through the staff report. We can hold it a minute. This was seen by the various committees that review things before the planning board sees it. I don't know whether there's anybody here from Shade Tree or from Sprab or... I'm sorry?
Shade Tree or the last...
Sprab, Site Plan Review Advisory Board.
Sprab did not review this application.
They did not? Okay. Environmental Commission, did you?
Yeah, so we did create a memo. Do you want me to go over it or?
Well, if it wasn't covered by the staff memo, could you summarize it?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think some of the things kind of Dan discussed were sort of mentioned in our memo. You know, I was kind of planning on getting into this as we, you know, kind of respond to, you know, the testimony and applicant, but, you know, I think the applicant has seen all these recommendations and, you know, I'd be curious to hear how they respond to that. So, yeah.
Thank you. All right. Board, after I looked at Jerry's scenario for this evening, I realized that we always have a few board questions for the staff. And so we've got Dan here as well as Jack and Derek, and maybe this is a good time to ask board questions. Anyone? Louise?
Well, a quick question about the bike path. I think, I'm not sure that I understood, when you asked for them to widen the cartway to 30 feet, is that the interior cul-de-sacs or are you talking about widening Herentown?
Widening Herentown. So what that is is...
Providing bike paths along Herentown.
Along Herentown.
Okay. All right.
That's two 10-foot travel lanes and a five-foot bike lane on each side of Herentown Road.
Okay. From where to where?
From the intersection of Bun and Herentown, right at that curve, and then to going east to the end of their property.
Okay.
So that would include widening the road and then mill and overlay the entire road for that length.
And you think there's a reasonable possibility that the same treatment can be implemented on the remainder of Herentown Road?
So it's always tough when you try to widen a road. Trees have to come down, but if you want bike lanes, you have to widen the road. It's really, it's actually ultimately a council decision, but I mean, if you want to get bike lanes throughout the town, the roads do have to be widened. I think it's more likely that you would be able to widen the entire length of the road to 30 feet than it would be to get an eight-foot bike path along the entire length of the road.
Okay. Other questions? Anyone? Alvin?
Yeah, I do. I think it might be in your report, Derek. There is a request for the affordable housing site, that there be an environmental study done. Is that correct?
Yes, we've requested that. Yes, sir.
Do you know anything about this, this piece of property now?
Not other than just driving back there. It seems to be residential use for ages, but we just wanted to make sure if there were any concerns that we knew about them. It might adversely impact affordable housing being put on that site, so. For now.
All right. Anyone else? Questions?
This might be more for the applicant, but I had a question about how the area of the detention basin was calculated. I heard a number of three acres. Is that just something that the applicant had provided or is it the cleared area or is it the entire basin? I'm asking because there's a 4% cap.
Yeah, it's kind of a common, it does include some of the area that's not been cleared because that will be, you know, there'll be water there. So it's kind of a general area of the cleared area plus part of the wooded area to get that, to get that three acres.
I had basin-related questions too, which I will probably be directed to the applicant's engineer when the time comes, but you did flag under stormwater management review comments the creation, I guess, of a class four dam. And I noticed that the basin is going to be designed to hold up to seven feet of water. It just seems pretty radical. And just, just having one big basin, it strikes me as odd here too, given current best practices. So I'll have questions about that, but if you want to talk at all about the dam aspect of things, that would be helpful.
I'll let the applicant go into the one big basin and, but one thing that we looked at, and we did it with this site and also the Province Line site, is rather than your conventional detention basin where you dig a big hole in the ground and take out all the vegetation, we looked at the possibility of putting the berm in, and that saves quite a bit of the existing vegetation. So the, the bottom of the detention basin is going to be the natural wooded area. So it's, it's a, it is a dam. It's something that, we have quite a few of them in town. Most of the detention basins are the same way, but it's to preserve trees and not just have a big hole in the ground.
But one assumes that when the basin fills with water, it's going to kill some of the trees. They're not going to like having wet feet, correct?
Well, a lot of the area is, it's not wetlands, but it's, you know, the adjacent area is wetland. So the possibility that some of the trees would die, yes, but it would stay as a natural wooded area, and you would have secondary growth that would come in for anything that died.
And would, they wouldn't be expected to take down the trees that die as part of the maintenance for the basin?
No, I think the intent is to really, to just leave it as a natural wooded area. I mean, if, if all the trees dies or a lot of them die, there, you know, there may need the need to take some of the dead wood out of there, but part of, in a forest area, that's, that's part of a forest is having the dead trees remain in place. You don't actually want to remove them as they decay on the, on the floor.
Okay. Anyone else? If not, I think we're ready for the applicant.
You want to swear, ma'am?
No, I don't think that's necessary, Tom.
Good evening. My name is Tom Letizia. I'm an attorney with Pepper Hamilton, representing the applicant, Layman Development Corp. I just so it's clear for the record, the planning board did take jurisdiction of this application at its meeting on February 7th, 2019, based on affidavits and supporting documents submitted by my office confirming the hearing notice requirements of the municipal layman's law were met. The board publicly announced on February 7th that the hearing on the application would be carried to March 7th, and it was then further carried by public announcement on March 7th to this evening. This is an application for preliminary final subdivision and site plan of a 30-lot residential development to be called Thompson Woods on a 90-plus acre parcel along Herentown and Mount Lucas Roads within Princeton. It is an as-of-right, variance-free residential subdivision pursuant to the residential cluster option of Princeton's ordinance. We are also seeking an extension of the vesting period associated with final site plan and subdivision approval from the usual two years and three one-year extensions to a total of six years as permitted under NJSA 4055D-52B of the municipal layman's law and Section 10B 134 of the Princeton ordinance for planned residential clusters of 50 acres or more, taking into account the number of proposed homes and the market. The board's professionals have given you an overall summary of the application, and of course, our team of professionals will shortly be providing more specifics on the I would like to take this opportunity to give the board some context as it considers this application, as long as we can get the computer to work. The phrase residential cluster will be mentioned quite a bit during these hearings. Therefore, I think it's important to become reacquainted with the purposes of the municipality's residential cluster ordinance. And that's the cue for the first slide, but, okay.
Tom, do you have hard copy by any chance?
What's that?
Do you have hard copy of the slides? If you could distribute that maybe.
While we're trying to figure out the, the technology here, and Derek is passing out the hard copies of our first exhibit, which is a PowerPoint presentation of 40 slides. Jerry, do we want to mark this as a single exhibit? It could be A1.
O1. I'm sorry, A1.
No, that'll come later. It'll be A1.
And does Bruce have a copy of this?
No. Okay. One? My name is Bruce Affron, A, F as in French, R, A, N as in math, um, town chief for certain...
If you just bear with us for a couple minutes, because I think it's really important. What, no ovation? Thank you. So as I was saying, if we're back on, that I think it's important for the board to get reacquainted with the purposes of its own residential cluster ordinance. So the first slide, which is number two of the PowerPoint set, I just want to briefly read, read into the record the 10 purposes of the residential cluster ordinance. And this is an excerpt from Section 10B 189 of your code. "The municipal council to implement the goals and objectives of, of the Princeton Master Plan has determined that the residential cluster development technique should be allowed and encouraged in particular zoning districts as an alternative to conventional development in order, A, to allow for innovation in residential development to meet the demands of the citizens for a variety of housing types, sizes, designs, and the forms of ownership and affordable housing opportunities; to provide a flexible B, to provide a flexible design method which can relate the type and layout of residential developments to the particular site constraints and to the particular demands for housing and related facilities; C, to protect environmentally sensitive lands such as stream corridors, steep slopes, and other critical site features and natural resources by requiring that the more fragile areas of the site remain in preserved open space; D, to allow the most developable areas of the site to be more intensely developed in return for retaining other portions of the site in common open space; E, to allow residential developments to be designed and constructed at a lower cost per dwelling unit for streets, utilities, and other site improvements; F, to reduce the amount of blasting and other subsurface disturbances required for street and utility installations; G, to provide for recreation facilities which are appropriate to the needs and convenient to the residents of the development; H, to allow for the installation of pedestrian and bicycle circulation networks to serve the residents of the development and which are integrated with the other community facilities; I, to provide a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and design arrangements and related to the particular site; and then finally J, to provide substantive and administrative regulations which can control development pressures so that the flexibility and innovation allowed is channeled into developments which accomplish the purposes herein stated. The point is that the applicant is here this evening not to try and persuade you that these land use purposes, which I just read, are somehow unimportant and should not matter in this case. On the contrary, the development plan being presented this evening fully embraces such goals and carries out the public objectives inherent in the cluster regulations, including environmental protection, establishment of a large area of open space available to the public, proposing a compact development that minimizes the amount of construction disturbance, and providing for affordable housing opportunities, among others. This proposed plan is the very essence of what the municipality intended through enactment of its residential cluster ordinance. In fact, the plan being presented is identical to the concept plan that was reviewed by this board when it recommended to council in 2017 adoption of the Affordable Housing Density Option Amendment to the cluster ordinance as an example of what the ordinance would accomplish on eligible sites. You're likely to hear claims from certain members of the public during these proceedings about severe impacts to threatened endangered species, or steep slopes, or wetlands, off-site drainage, historical features, and the like. No doubt, these are all important concerns in the abstract, of which in reality are not present with this cluster plan. In the end, after listening to all of the discussion and debate, we would simply ask and hope that the board will judge this as-of-right, variance-free application on its merits based on the credible and relevant evidence, and by applying the appropriate subdivision, site plan, and zoning standards of your ordinance. Under those parameters, we believe the only rational and reasonable determination the board can reach at the conclusion of these hearings is that the Thompson Woods plan complies in all respects with the residential cluster ordinance and thus warrants approval. Thank you. So with that, unless there's some questions for me, I'd like to begin our presentation.
Anyone?
I will call Dee Jeffrey Brown. Yes.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed. Please state your full name and spell your last name.
Dee Jeffrey Brown. Last name, B-R-O-W-N.
Mr. Brown, what is your business address?
53 North Post Road, PO Box 610, Princeton Junction, New Jersey.
And what firm are you associated with?
Princeton Junction Engineering PC.
And what is your position with Princeton Junction Engineering?
I'm the president of the firm.
And what is your occupation?
I'm a professional engineer, planner, and landscaper.
Can you please describe briefly for the board your professional education?
I hold a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute.
And I believe you already mentioned this, but what is the licenses that you possess?
Professional engineer. I've been a professional engineer in New Jersey since 1977. I've been a professional planner since 1988, and I've been a professional landscaper since 1991.
And can you describe your engineering experience briefly?
Yes, I'm primarily involved in site development. I've prepared hundreds of site plan surveys and subdivisions throughout central New Jersey during my career.
And have you appeared before this board as an expert in the past?
Yes, on many occasions.
And have you appeared before other boards similar to this board in other jurisdictions?
Yes, I've appeared before boards in every municipality in Mercer County and many municipalities in surrounding counties.
Mad Chair, I offer Mr. Brown as an expert.
We accept his credentials. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Brown, are you familiar with the zoning, subdivision, and site plan ordinance of Princeton?
Yes, I am.
Are you familiar with the residential cluster ordinance of Princeton?
Yes.
Were you involved with the preparation of the plan submitted for the subject subdivision of the site?
Yes, I participated both as a designer and a supervisor at the work.
Are you familiar with the subject site?
Yes.
How many times have you visited or walked the site approximately?
Approximately 10 times over the past five years.
Okay, turning to the site itself, can you first orient the board with a description of the subject property?
Sure. The project site is lots 1, 2, and 14 in Block 1001, consisting of 90.62 acres of land. It's located on the easterly side of Mount Lucas Road and the northerly side of Herrentown Road. It's bounded on the east by residential lots fronting on Herrentown Road, or Herrentown Lane, excuse me, on the north by Montgomery Walk, which is a multifamily development in Montgomery Township, on the west by Mount Lucas Road, and residential lots that front on Mount Lucas Road, and on the nor, on the south, rather, by Herrentown Road.
Mr. Brown, with each slide, you need to describe what you're, which one you're referring to and please.
Okay, this, this slide is an aerial exhibit that shows the, the overall property without the subdivision lines depicted on it.
And this was prepared by your office?
Yes, it was.
And what's the date?
4/4/19.
Thank you.
The site consists mostly of wooded land with two existing single-family residential dwellings, concrete block barn, and other appurtenances. All of the existing structures and appurtenances that exist on the lot are slated to be demolished as part of this application. Approximately 16 acres in the eastern portion of the tract where the majority of this project will be constructed was previously cleared for farming and for the existing farmstead, and most of it now consists of regrowth woodlands, although the farmstead does still remain, and there is a cleared area as well, a small cleared area. The westerly portion of the site is traversed by Van Horn Brook. Okay, this, this plan is entitled Wetlands. It's also dated 4/4/2019, and it depicts the wetlands on the site as well as the floodplain and the DNR Canal Commission buffer.
And this was prepared by your office?
Yes, it was.
And this is slide five of the PowerPoint.
The westerly portion of the tract is traversed by Van Horn Brook and an unnamed tributary to Van Horn Brook with associated wetlands, wetlands buffers, floodplain, and waterway corridors. The site slopes moderately and steeply easterly and westerly to these watercourses. Wetlands on the site have been verified by an NJDEP letter of interpretation, excuse me, issued on September 12th, 2016. Per the LOI, all of the freshwater wetlands on the site are intermediate resource value and have 50-foot wide transition areas. State open waters within the wetlands have no buffers. There are a total of 6.99 acres of wetlands area, or 7.7% of the total tract area. Wetlands buffers occupy an additional 9.4 acres, or 10.4% of the tract. In addition to these wetlands areas, approximately 4.5 acres of the tract lie in the flood hazard area of Van Horn Brook, and almost all of this overlaps the freshwater wetlands and transition areas. In total, approximately 16.4 acres of the property, or 18.1%, are constrained by wetlands, wetlands buffers, and flood hazard areas. Slops on the site range from 1% up.
Again, Mr. Brown, you need to identify the, the exhibit, please.
This exhibit is entitled Slope Analysis, also dated 4/4/2019 and prepared by our office, and this is slide number six. Slops on the site range from about 1% up to approximately 30%. Slops exceeding 25% are limited to about 1.4 acres in the south-central portion of the site, and they're indicated on the map by the dark blue color. Slops in nearly all of the proposed construction area range from 1 to 15%, with smaller areas of slopes ranging from 16 to 18% in the area indicated on the map. That area is the rear of proposed lots 1.23 through 1.26. Residential construction is prohibited by ordinance on slopes greater than 25%, and none is proposed in connection with this application.
Mr. Brown, I have a question. The phrase steep slopes appears in a number of places in the ordinance. What's the definition of steep slopes in the ordinance?
Well, as to residential development, steep slopes are considered to be anything that's over 25%. That would be unbuildable. I believe for commercial properties, the requirement is, the limit is 15%. Anything over 15% would be unbuildable for commercial development.
But again, this is a residential development, so steep slopes is defined as 25% or greater, is that correct?
Correct.
And there's no construction proposed within steep slopes as defined under the ordinance, is that correct?
That's correct.
Wait, did you say 20% or 25%?
25.
25%.
Is the ordinance?
Yes.
Yes.
What is this exhibit, Mr. Brown?
This exhibit is the conventional subdivision plan.
I'm, I'm sorry, can I just ask one more question about the steep slopes? When you say that there's no construction in steep slope areas, are you saying that none of the lot area associated with the development has steep slopes? Or you're saying that none of the structures would impact on steep slope areas?
Well, both. None of the proposed lots are in slopes greater than 25%, and there's also no construction proposed in slopes greater than 25%. I'd now like to talk a little bit about the zoning. Most of the tract lies within the RA zone with an area of about 10.6 acres near the eastern tract boundary in the RB zone.
Identify this exhibit, I don't recall your.
I did say that it's the conventional subdivision plan. And I can't read the date, I assume it's also today's date.
It is today's date, and slide seven.
Slide number seven, yes. Most of the tract does lie in the RA zone with an area of about 10.6 acres near the eastern boundary in the RB zone, and about one acre near Mount Lucas Road in the OR1 zone. This conforming conventional subdivision plat yielding 20 lots was prepared by my office, and it was submitted as part of this application. Looking at the conventional plan, you'll see that each of the 20 lots is about, is at least four acres in size, and each has sufficient unconstrained area within the building envelope to construct a dwelling, and we have indicated potential dwelling locations on each of those lots. This conforming conventional plan was submitted to the municipality for review and approval and was used as the basis for determining lot yield under the cluster provisions of the municipality's land use ordinance.
So, Mr. Brown, referring to this exhibit, number seven, can you point out the area of the steep slopes, 25% or greater?
Okay, yeah, it is being indicated with the pointer there where the steep slopes are. Basically, in the, the middle of the lot toward the south end.
And can you point out the wetland areas, please, and the buffers?
Yes, the wetlands areas are associated with Van Horn Brook and the unnamed tributary to Van Horn Brook, and extend up to the east to the southeast corner of the property.
Thanks for pointing that out, I was going to ask that question. So what you're saying is that none of these buildings on the conventional design are, sit on steep slopes over 25% or wetlands?
Correct. There's, there would be no construction required. The lots are four acres in size, so there's obviously a large area on each lot to potentially construct a house, and you can see from the plan that none of the houses that were shown And you can see from the plan that none of the houses that were showing as proposed are being constructed in the steep slope areas.
Okay.
Or in the wetlands or wetlands buffers for that matter.
And I'm just curious about access, and I don't want to get into it too much now, but access for the bottom three lots on the left. Is that cul-de-sac driveway on the property or is that in the right-of-way?
It would be in the right-of-way of Her- the unimproved right-of-way of Herrentown Road.
So, that would require town approval to allow for that construction?
I really don't know. I assume it would.
Okay.
But I guess like any other, I mean, actually, the roads that we're proposing would end up being owned by the township also, so I don't know what the approval process would be to construct that in an existing right-of-way.
Okay.
I would ask the board members if they could hold their questions till the witness has finished testifying.
The cluster provisions of the ordinance used for the design of the current plan allow for lots as small as ten thousand square feet with open space of less than eighty percent of the tract. Our proposed building lots range in size from twenty-one thousand two hundred fifty-five square feet to thirty-three thousand ninety-two square feet with all but two of the lots being approximately one-half acre in size. The proposed lots are also fully compliant with all the bulk standards of the ordinance.
Mr. Brown, can you identify this slide for the record?
This slide is, again, the cluster plan prepared by our office on four, four, twenty nineteen. And this is slide number eight. The cluster provisions of the ordinance allow for a density bonus based upon a variety of criteria as shown in this chart, and this is slide number nine. And it is titled Thompson Woods Cluster Subdivision, prepared by my office on four, four, nineteen. So, the cluster provisions are based on a variety of criteria. First, the provision of public access walking paths in the open space in excess of a thousand lineal feet allows a five percent increase in the number of lots. When the length of the proposed pathways is increased to five thousand lineal feet, the total bonus for this category is ten percent or two lots. The applicant proposes walking paths in excess of five thousand lineal feet and therefore qualifies for a ten percent bonus. Second, for common open space in excess of fifty percent of the tract area, the bonus is five percent for each additional ten percent in open space. The applicant is proposing sixty-seven point forty-two acres of open space or seventy-four point four percent of the tract and also qualifies for a ten percent bonus in this category. And last, for dedication of land to the municipality to be used for affordable housing, for every acre in excess of one acre, the bonus is fifteen percent. And since the applicant is dedicating three acres for affordable housing, it's entitled to a thirty percent bonus. There are conditions applying to this third bonus regarding the affordable housing. The first being that the minimum tract size is seventy-five acres where our actual tract size is ninety point six two acres. The minimum open space is seventy percent of the tract. Our proposed open space is sixty-seven point four acres or seventy-four point four percent of the tract. The minimum preserved open space, preserved open space is sixty percent of the open space. We're proposing proposed open space, preserved open space at ninety-one percent of the total open space. And the last criterion is minimum hundred-foot setback and landscape buffer from the tract boundary. And we are providing a hundred-foot landscape buffer to the residents on Herrentown Lane. There's one additional requirement related to the proposed open space is that the land area on which the detention basins are constructed may only be counted to the extent of four percent of the tract area. The proposed basin construction area is roughly three point five acres or three point eight six percent of the tract. In addition to these conditions, all conditions applying to the three-acre affordable housing parcel are being met. And these conditions are: The parcel must have the availability of public sewerage and the parcel we're proposing to dedicate lies in the service area and has access to public sewerage in Mount Lucas Road. The parcel must have frontage on an existing or proposed road and the parcel does have frontage on Mount Lucas Road. The third criteria is, criterion is no more than twenty percent of the parcel may lie in critical areas and this parcel has seventeen percent in critical areas which includes the hundred-foot DNR Canal Commission buffer. And fourth, all structures must be removed and it must be free of environmental hazards. As I mentioned previously, we are proposing to remove all the structures on the tract and the site will be tested for environmental hazards with remedial actions taken if required. Therefore, all of these conditions are met.
Mr. Brown, during that testimony, you were referring to, it's a repeat, the cluster plan, which is slide ten, prepared by your office, correct?
That is correct and also dated with today's date.
Okay. Now, what is this?
This is another aerial map of the site, but this one shows the subdivision superimposed on it. And this is slide number eleven. As you can see from this, although not required by ordinance, the dedicated parcel is ideally suited for affordable housing as it's located close to services and transportation. And looking at the map, you can see the bus stop and the bus route along Route two oh six, the CVS, and a number of other business and services that are in close proximity to the affordable housing parcel. Going back to the cluster plan again, this is slide number twelve. Also, the cluster plan dated four, four, twenty nineteen. The project consists of the construction of thirty-lot, single-family residential lots on two cul-de-sac streets which are accessed from a divided boulevard extending northerly from Herrentown Road. The lots will be approximately a half acre in size with a couple of lots in the three-quarter acre range. The disturbed area for this project will be approximately twenty-six acres or twenty-nine percent of the total tract area. I note that the divided boulevard is a safety feature that's required by the RSIS, which residential site improvement standards, because we have in effect a cul-de-sac street with more than twenty-five dwelling units. Will consist of an access and an egress cartway, each twenty feet wide, separated by a ten-foot wide concrete island in a seventy-foot wide right-of-way. The island will be landscaped. The cul-de-sac streets will have thirty-foot wide cartways and fifty-foot rightaways, each culminating in a forty-foot radius cul-de-sac in a fifty-foot radius right-of-way. And all the proposed cartways will have granite block curbs and concrete sidewalks on both We did receive some comments from our neighbors at the Environmental Commission meeting primarily regarding the width of the divided boulevard. And subject to the approval of the fire official and municipal engineer, we could reduce the overall width by ten feet by narrowing each cartway to fifteen feet in width rather than twenty feet in width. Also, in Dan Terbemilsky's review letter on page four, he suggests that under RSIS, the cul-de-sac streets could be reduced to twenty-eight foot cartway width with sidewalk on one side only. Although we think the design that we've presented is better for a subdivision of roughly one-half acre lots, we recognize the environmental benefit of narrowing the cartways and we are willing to comply with that suggestion if the board deems that appropriate. Dan has also suggested the possibility of reconfiguring the proposed cul-de-sacs as a loop road. It's our opinion that the cul-de-sac arrangement is more desirable in this residential setting and will not result in any additional travel distance or number of trips for the proposed residents. The loop road would, however, create an additional point fifteen acres of impervious surface. Also, with regard to the proposed cul-de-sacs, Jack West has indicated on page three of his review letter that a variance is required for the proposed cul-de-sacs, and I think he discussed that in his testimony, that the municipal ordinance is actually superseded by the RSIS standards and that is no longer a requirement. The lots will be served by public sewer which will be tied into the existing public sewer in Herrentown Road, approximately seven hundred feet west of the proposed entrance boulevard. There was a question raised at the Environmental Commission meeting regarding the alignment of the proposed sewer, which we've routed out through the open space rather than following the unimproved Herrentown Road right-of-way. The reason that we did that was that there was a high point in that existing right-of-way which would have resulted in a thirty-five-foot deep cut for the sanitary sewer. And by extending it out into the open space, we've reduced that cut to about fifteen feet. The lots will also be served by public water which will be tied into the existing twelve-inch water main in Herrentown Road at the site entrance. Gas and wire-served utilities will also be brought into the site underground from connections to existing facilities in Herrentown Road. Streetlights will be provided at both intersections and at both cul-de-sacs and at roughly four-hundred-foot intervals along both cul-de-sac streets and will employ LED fixtures as recommended by the Environmental Commission. Concrete sidewalks are proposed on both sides of all proposed streets and, as requested by Jack, will be extended along the north side of Herrentown Road to Bun Drive. The applicant will also be widening the existing cartway of Herrentown Road across its improved frontage to thirty feet in width to provide for two ten-foot wide travel lanes and two five-foot wide bike lanes in accordance with Jack's recommendations. The applicant will also be constructing nearly a mile of trail through the open space. The proposed trail will be a woodchip path, six feet in width. The final alignment of the trail will be established in the field in consultation with the board's professionals. In addition, will provide an easement for future pedestrian connection to Autumn Hill Park as requested by Jack on page ten of his review letter. Street trees will be planted on both sides of the proposed roadways and in the island dividing the boulevard. In accordance with your professionals' recommendations, street tree spacing will be tightened from the fifty-foot spacing currently proposed and the proposed mix will be revised to contain no more than ten percent of any one species. In addition to street trees, the applicant will be adding plantings to the existing vegetation in the hundred-foot buffer strip between the development and the properties running on Herrentown Lane to provide a denser screen for the existing homes. I note that this hundred-foot buffer is two and a half times the width that would otherwise be required for a cluster subdivision without dedication for affordable housing and that no buffer would be required if this were a conventional subdivision.
Jeff, you're going through Jack's report, and you're indicating where you agree. Is that a fair characterization of what you're doing?
Well, I'm also just trying to describe the project in general and touch on the things that Jack mentioned in his report, yes.
To the extent you can refer to a paragraph in Jack's report, at least for me, it would be very helpful.
Okay. All right, the next one I get to, I'll see if I can find that. Based upon the proposed arrangement of dwellings shown on our plans, the buffer will result in a separation of the homes along Herrentown Lane in excess of two hundred twenty feet. And even if the proposed homes were located at the rear setback line of the lots, which is really implausible, this minimum distance would be about a hundred and ninety feet. If there were a conventional subdivision, there would be no buffer requirement and the minimum distance between homes could be as little as a hundred feet.
Mr. Brown, since we're talking about dimensions in this location, can you point out for the board the distance of the back of the Herrentown Lane homes to our property line, please?
Uh-
Can you, you probably can't read-
I can't, I know that the smallest distance is sixty-two feet and that's the one at the top. The furthest north home along Herrentown Lane is sixty-two feet. And the rest of them, I think the one at the bottom is around sixty-five feet and they're all somewhere in the sixty to eighty-five foot range. But the least is sixty-two feet.
Right, so all of them are less than a hundred feet?
Yes, the existing homes, yes, are less than a hundred feet from our property line.
Okay, thank you.
The applicant will also be planting replacement trees throughout the property to compensate for existing trees removed for construction. Will work with the landscape subcommittee and the board's professionals to provide an acceptable landscape plan. We believe we can plant all of the required replacement trees on site. Drainage from the development will be collected in a pipe and inlet system and will be piped northwesterly through an easement to a proposed infiltration detention basin located adjacent to Van Horn Brook near the northerly boundary of the tract. The basin will provide flow rate attenuation as well as water quality treatment and groundwater recharge in accordance with state stormwater management regulations and Princeton land use ordinance criteria. The basin will discharge through a concrete outlet structure and concrete piping to Van Horn Brook. And the drainage system is designed to pick up pretty much the entire developed subdivision. There will be a small amount of uncontrolled runoff coming from some of the lots on Harper Court West, the first three or four lots at the top. The front portion of those lots will flow to the street, there will be a small portion of uncontrolled runoff from them. And then the lots down on the southerly portion of Harper Court West, the five lots, the front portions of those lots will also drain to the street and then into the collection system and flow down to the basin with the backs of those five lots flowing uncontrolled. We will be substantially reducing the runoff from the controlled area. So, we will meet the state stormwater criteria and Princeton township's criteria. Moving now to the wetlands map.
I'm sorry, Mr. Brown, if you could go back.
Yes.
You may be touching on this later, but I think this is the appropriate time. Can you discuss a little further the design of the basin? That was a question from Ms. Wilson.
Okay, yes.
How we chose that.
Yeah, as was discussed by Jack and I think a little bit by Dan, we are proposing to create the basin by just building a berm in the woods and leaving the interior of the basin natural and treed. That will save a substantial amount of the existing mature forest. The flow will be controlled by basically an inlet box near the middle of the pond. There will be an infiltration element where a small amount of runoff will be disposed of by infiltration to meet the state's water quality standards. And then the balance of the water will flow through various surfaces in the box through a concrete pipe to Van Horn Brook. Moving now to slide thirteen, which is, again, the wetlands map prepared by my office on four, four, twenty nineteen. And looking at this, you'll see that we've avoided encroachment into the wetlands for the most part, with the exception of the crossings at the entrance boulevard, which will disturb about point zero four acres of wetlands in state open waters. And the sanitary sewer runs between manholes A four and A five and A five and A six, which will disturb approximately point zero five acres of wetlands in state open waters. And a single walking trail crossing of state open waters which will- waters, which will disturb less than .01 acres. And those are the only wetlands disturbances proposed, so it's a total of .09 acres. Looking also at the flood hazard areas and water records, except for the entrance road crossing and sanitary sewer runs that I just described, these environmentally sensitive features will not be disturbed. Moving to slide number 14, is the slope analysis plan dated with today's date and prepared by my office. You'll see that none of the disturbed areas lie on slopes greater than 25%, with the vast majority of construction occurring on slopes of less than 7% and very limited development on slopes greater than 15%. You'll also see from the existing contours... If we could go back to that. Yeah. It's a little difficult to see on this because the contours don't show up that well, but about 2.5 acres in the vicinity of proposed lots 1.01, 1.02, and 1.03 flows to our neighbors on Heron Town Lane. About 1.5 acres of this area lies in the 100-foot buffer strip and will be undisturbed by construction, except for the planning of some additional plantings. Almost all of the remaining area will be regraded to flow westerly across the proposed lots to the collection system in Harper Road East. There'll be no negative drainage impacts to the homes on Heron Town Lane. Finally, looking at the quality of the various wooded areas on the site, the bulk of the residential area is situated in an area that was recently farmed or in the cleared area of the existing farmstead. Vegetation in this area is mostly regrowth woodlands with an understory of brush and briars. Similarly, the area being dedicated for affordable housing was either previously farmed or the site of the existing home, which is to be demolished, and consists mostly of regrowth woodlands also. Of the total 26-acre disturbance area, only about 6 acres lie in areas that were not previously farmed or otherwise disturbed. Our environmental consultant, Randy Curtis, will elaborate further on this. Moving now again to the cluster plan, which is slide number 15. To summarize, it's my opinion that this design meets every purpose of the municipality's cluster ordinance and is fully compliant with the applicable density and bulk requirements of the ordinance. It's also my opinion that this cluster design is clearly the most appropriate way to develop this site and provide significant environmental benefits over a conventional subdivision design. As I've testified, the project will only disturb 26 of the 90.62 acres of tract, or roughly 29%. The project, to the extent practicable, will be constructed in areas that were previously farmed and now consist of regrowth vegetation. The project will be constructed in the flattest areas of the site, with only limited disturbance of slopes over 15% and no disturbance of slopes exceeding 25%. The project will create 67.42 acres of permanent open space, 91% of which will be preserved open space. The project will provide the municipality with a well-located 3-acre parcel for affordable housing in an area that has access to services and transportation. The project will include nearly a mile of bucking trail through the open space that will be available not only to residents of the proposed development, but also to the general public. And the cluster design with the affordable housing component will include a 100-foot landscape buffer from the lots on Heron Town Lane as opposed to a 40-foot buffer for regular cluster or no buffer for a conventional subdivision. This buffer will be enhanced with a variety of plantings to provide a dense screen from our neighbors.
Mr. Brown, maybe we can go to Mr. West's report and identify those items that we agreed to, which I think, in my view, is we agree with everything, but we should, for the record, make clear what we're agreeing to and whether there was any items that need to be clarified.
Okay. The...
Maybe it'd be most useful if I could walk you through it, okay?
Pardon me?
Maybe it would be most useful if I could walk you through it and you could tell me whether there's agreement or not.
Thank you.
On page 3 of the report, you have item 1, and B, C, and D deal with documentation, instruments, et cetera, et cetera. Any problem with that?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Excuse me, Jerry?
Yep.
I believe the applicant has agreed to all the conditions in my memo. I don't know if you want to still go through them, or...
It's fine if they've agreed to everything.
Yes, we take no exceptions to Jack's report.
Okay, great. That's fine.
Mr. West, except I think your last comment on number 19 on page 14, I think that needs some clarification. I don't believe there is a bridge, a single-lane stone arch bridge in the vicinity of the property. I think that might have been a...
Yes, I spoke with Jack about that, and that was a carryover from another report that didn't get taken out.
Everything except number 19.
Thank you.
I have no further questions for Mr. Brown. He's available for questions from the board.
Okay. Questions? Yes. Go ahead, David.
I have a question about the way that you've calculated your open space. Looking at the calculations on sheet 5, you show your total acreage as the same before, you know, existing and proposed, and it appears that the amount of open space is just the difference between the developed space and the total amount of space, but shouldn't you be taking into account the 3 acres that are being dedicated to affordable housing? You can't really claim that as open space.
That's not included in the open space number, the 3 acres.
But you have the same amount of the total lot area as 90.62 before, that's the existing, and it's still 90.62 proposed. It doesn't... It's not been reduced to 87.62.
Oh, you're talking about in the chart on the plan?
I'm talking about, yeah, the chart on sheet 5.
The 3 acres is included in the lots?
It's included in the existing as I read this area schedule.
It's... If I could get that in front of me. Okay. I'm referring to the area schedule on sheet 1 of the plans. Is that what you're looking at?
I'm looking at sheet 5 of 28.
It's probably the same area schedule. Let me just see if what sheet 5 shows. Okay, yes, the area schedule. Right, the 3-acre affordable housing lot is included in lots 1.01 through 1.32.
Okay.
So, that 18.52 acres includes the 3-acre affordable housing parcel.
I see.
Just another question quickly on the affordable housing parcel. You know, it looks like about 20% of that on the right side, just looking at page 5 of your presentation, about 20% of that site looks like it's in the DRCC buffer area.
Yeah, it's actually 17%.
17%?
I testified to that, yes.
Can you comment on what could and could not be constructed or done in that area in a future affordable housing development plan?
Well, the way the DNR buffer is established, it's 100 feet from the 100-year floodline. Normally, the DNR Canal Commission doesn't like you going in there and doing anything. They will, in certain cases, make an exception, particularly if the area is not heavily wooded. But in general, I wouldn't count on being able to use that for too much.
And that would include, you know, parking, parking lot space as well?
Right. I doubt that they would allow you to do that. They might allow you to put a stormwater basin in there, which would be the most likely use for it, I would think, since it's on the lowest part going down toward the brook.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just... If I could just piggyback off of my colleague's question on that same exhibit. It says it's 3/10 of a mile from the bus stop. Is... How's that measured? Is that measured as the crow flies? Or how's the access to the bus stop?
I believe it's as the crow flies, yes.
Okay.
Back to, again, the, which is slide 5. You say 17% of the affordable lot is not going to be appropriate for affordable housing.
Well, as I did say, that you might be able to do something in the DNR buffer. I don't know that the ordinance has a limitation that only 20% of the 3 acres can be critical areas. I don't think the ordinance identifies the DNR buffer as critical area. It really has to do with slope and wetlands and floodplain, but we included it realizing that it is restricted by the DNR buffer.
But it's going to be less than 3 acres. You're going to have less than 3 acres for...
Well, no, it'll be 3 acres with 17% that will be restricted in some way, but the ordinance allows up to 20% of it to be restricted.
Wait, so are there going to be other expert witnesses to testify?
Yes.
Okay, so you guys aren't done with the full presentation? Well, I guess while we're on the engineering side of things, I'm just curious about the berm and, you know, managing water and the effects that will have on the ecology there and the landscape there. You know, if you have, say, standing water for several days, how's that going to affect those plants?
Well, the standing water, the part of it that's infiltration is really limited to just the lower, probably, and I'm guessing it's probably less than a foot is the infiltration part. The rest of it will drain out through orifices in the outlet structure, so it will only be really right up along the toe of the berm where the water stands for any length of time. The rest of it will drain out through the various orifices, because it's sloping down through the woods to the berm, so only the lowest part will have water for an extended period of time.
And how tall is the berm again?
Excuse me?
How tall is the berm again?
How tall is the berm? It's about 7 feet, I believe, and it is a Class 4 dam. A Class 4 dam is the lowest category of dam, and it would be any dam that's over 5 feet tall would be classified as a Class 4 dam.
And this would basically mitigate any kind of storm up to like 100 years or what?
Right. It's designed to mitigate the 2, 10, and 100-year storms. So, it would reduce the peak flow rate, it would reduce the volume of runoff, and it would provide water quality for you.
Thanks.
I wonder if you could comment on the recommendation in the Environmental Commission's report, where the PC highly recommends that the discrepancies noted in the engineering report regarding stormwater management and the inconsistencies between the environmental impact statement list of steep slope areas compared with the calculations indicated in the Princeton Junction Engineering Plan should be clarified before the planning board hears this application. Have those inconsistencies been clarified?
Well, as far as the steep slopes, I'm not exactly sure what the environmental report states, but I know that the 1.4 acres is the correct number based on the definition in the ordinance. The definition in the ordinance measures that slope over a 10-foot vertical difference. So, you could have areas that are greater than 25% slope, but if they don't extend, you know, more than 40 feet, then they wouldn't be considered as being 25% slopes under the ordinance. You have to measure it over a 10-foot contour interval, not just over, like, between 2-foot contours. You could have areas where you have a 25% slope for 10 feet, and then it becomes a 5% slope, and under the ordinance, that would not be a 25% slope.
And are you saying that that's the case on this site, where there are 25% slopes over 10 feet?
Yes, the 1.4 acres that we showed on the slope slide, and maybe we could put that up again. Right, the dark blue area on that slide, those are the only areas under the ordinance that are 25% slope.
Okay, thank you.
I have another question. So, I should know this, but how were the lot sizes determined under the cluster ordinance?
How were they?
How were they determined, the lot sizes?
The lot sizes?
Or... I guess, did you just kind of pick up based off...
We could have gone down to as small as 10,000, or I'm not sure there really is an upper limit, but we just decided that...
So, you kind of chose on based off of the design that you wanted?
Yeah, we decided that this was appropriate for the amount of space that we had and the size house that we wanted to be able to build there, because the size of the lot actually determines how much square footage the houses can be.
Okay, thanks.
Did you have something else? Yep. Back to the berm. I assume that in order to build it, you would need to clear the land that it's going to be on?
Yes.
Or do you just... Okay, so how many acres or square feet approximately is, needs to be cleared in order to build that berm? And while I'm asking about it, what's the material and where do you get it? Are you taking it from someplace else on the site through grading or what?
No, I'm thinking that it would have to be brought in from offsite, and it would be clean fill. It would have to be tested to be, you know, free of any environmental hazards. As far as the area, I don't know exactly, but I know that the entire basin area is roughly 3.5 acres, so I would guess that the berm is maybe an acre and a half of that.
Oh, shoot. I had another question, and it just totally flew the coop. I'm sorry.
I had a question that I probably should have picked up on earlier. Will these houses all be constructed by one contractor, or will they be lots that are sold individually?
I think it would be all one contractor, but I'm not sure I can answer that definitively because I don't think any...
I assume that in order to build it, you would need to clear the land that it's going to be on?
Yes.
Or do you just...okay, so how many acres or square feet approximately is, needs to be cleared in order to build that berm? And while I'm asking about it, what's the material and where do you get it? Are you taking it from someplace else on the site through grading or what?
No, I'm thinking that it would have to be brought in from offsite, and it would be clean fill. It would have to be tested to be, you know, free of any environmental hazards. As far as the area, I don't know exactly, but I know that the entire basin area is roughly three and a half acres. So I would guess that the berm is maybe an acre and a half of that.
Oh, shoot. I had another question, and it just totally flew the coop. I'm sorry.
I had a question that I probably should have picked up on earlier. Will these houses all be constructed by one contractor, or will they be lots that are sold individually?
I think it would be all one contractor, but I'm not sure I can answer that definitively because I don't think anybody knows at this point.
My other question was, will there be fencing around the entire cluster development? I mean, this is an area that has heavy infestation of wildlife of all sizes, and I assume that anybody who has vegetation around their house will also have deer fencing, so does that mean that all of this is going to be sort of a fenced area?
We're not proposing any fence. I think whatever the homeowners do would be controlled by local ordinance, and I don't know what that...
You mentioned that the separation of this from here in town lane would either have a vegetative barrier or some sort of fencing and so on.
Right, we weren't actually proposing fencing. I mean, I think that's one of the things that the ordinance talks about as a possibility. I think we have probably so many replacement trees to plant that we can plant that area very densely and won't really need a fence.
I'm just concerned that you're going to be concentrating deer and so on in areas that they were not concentrated in before, so it's interesting. Thank you.
I have another...oh, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. You can go ahead.
Thanks, Zena. Two things. The area of detention basin at 3.5 acres is a bit more than 4% of the open space. How did you address?
It's just less than 4%. It's 4% of the tract area, not the open space.
I thought it was supposed to be... It was only up to 4% of the open space was allowed to be in a detention basin?
No, it's 4% of the entire tract. Can be considered usable open space, and it does get counted within the open space. And we're below the 4%. I believe we're at 3.86%.
3.86%, yes.
Okay. The other question that I had was... Actually, no, I'm not remembering. You can go ahead, Zena.
Okay, we'll go back to you if you remember. And Louise.
Well, let's have Zena first.
Jarring of memories. So, on the map there, on the plan, the light green, does that represent lawn or like grass lawn?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
I mean, is it possible to keep forested area in backyards?
The limit that you see in the light green is based on the limit of disturbance, which is basically the regraded area, the area that needs to be regraded to create the home sites and the rest.
So you have to basically regrade it, wipe it clean essentially, and so I guess you couldn't really keep trees or retain it?
Right, yeah. But in the areas that we regrade, we're not going to be able to keep trees. Now, there is the possibility that if someone were to come in and want to build some stone walls or, you know, they might be able to reduce that area somewhat. But I think basically what you're looking at there is the area that would be cleared.
And while we're on the subject of regrading, do you mind describing that? I think you maybe might have mentioned it, but I might have not heard it. But like, what's going to be involved in regrading that area?
Well, there'll be soil that will have to be removed and soil that will have to be added to create level areas for the houses.
So when we're talking about, you know, elevation, like, you know, what's the range of elevation that we're talking about in terms of difference? And I don't know if you can get into that.
You mean like the maximum fill area and the maximum cut area?
That could be a good...
I don't know the answer to that offhand. I'd only be guessing. I would guess maybe around five feet might be the maximum fill and probably less in the road areas.
And on the edges there, are you going to have retaining walls?
We're not proposing any, no. But that's what I was saying. The builder might, a builder might want to go in there and build some retaining walls to retain more of the existing vegetation. And then that would allow you to reduce that light green area which we're showing.
Okay.
One suggestion, and we've done this, we did this with the Province Line, is that each lot would be looked at individually depending on what type of house. Some of them may have walkout basements, which would reduce the amount of disturbance. There could be retaining walls that would reduce the disturbance. So basically, we would look at each lot as they come in on a case-by-case basis and try to reduce the amount of disturbance. There are some areas that possibly you could save some trees, but there is quite a bit of grading necessary to make the site work. But again, similar to what we did with Province Line, we would look at that for each lot.
All right, thanks. Does your memory come back?
Just a follow-up to the questions that we just asked. In terms of grading, there's one lot in particular, I think it's, well, at least on your sheet eight of your PowerPoint presentation, it's 1.25. According to sheet six, the steep slope of 18% is virtually at the rear of...okay. I'm referring to at least what appears to me to be designated 1.25 on sheet eight of the PowerPoint presentation. On sheet six, the slope of 18% seems to go virtually to the footprint of the house. So that entire lot and beyond is going to be regraded?
Yes.
I am distressed by the amount of grading that seems to be anticipated or regrading to build these houses. I just don't think that you need to create a flat space in order to construct a house. And the ecology and habitat up there is so fragile, and the distance to bedrock is so shallow that it just strikes me that it will be really destructive to do the kind of regrading that you seem to be talking about. I'm reassured by Jack's comments that things would be looked at on a lot-by-lot basis. But the notion that you need to start with a flat spot in order to construct a house rather than thinking about building it to the lot...
Well, when I say a flat spot, pretty much all of the lots that back to the west are designed to be walkout basements. So that does help to reduce the amount of grading. So when I say flat, it's not that the entire lot is flat, but it has to be buildable. And like I said, with a walkout basement, you can keep it higher, and since it does naturally slope from east to west, you will be able to stay closer to existing grade by having walkouts along there.
Just for reference, sorry to interrupt you, Andy. I'm just looking at the topo map, and it looks like at the highest point of the site, it looks like 260 feet above sea level, I think so. And the lowest point, basically on the top of the site plan, is essentially 240. So we're talking about a 20-foot difference.
Are you talking about the existing grades?
That's what it looks like.
Right. Yeah, I mean, it is sloped. Basically, most of it is sloped in the 1% to 7% range, as I stated, and almost all of it is less than 15% existing. But it does require some grading in order to be able to build houses on it.
I just wanted to make an additional comment about this relative to the other landmine project. I think what we actually did ask was to have the site reengineered to show less grading on the individual lots, even as part of the site plan application, with the proviso that individual homeowners could come back and change what was actually implemented. But I do think that's important because, you know, in order to make sure that your drainage plan and everything works and that you've got positive flows to your catch basins and so forth, you really need to look at trying to make these lots closer to the existing grading even before you sort of turn it over to the individual property owners. And the other comment that's related is that, you may not be aware, but we did have a recent change in our ordinance to, you know, define the height of a building to be from predevelopment grade rather than post-development grade. Well, whichever is, you know, whichever grade is lower. And so as you're developing your residences, you may get into trouble if you've regraded to create a flat landscape, and then people find that they're calculating their building heights based on predevelopment grades, so...
David, that ordinance was adopted after the application was filed, so it does not apply to this application.
Was that part of the neighborhood character?
This was actually filed prior to that.
No, no, I realized that.
Yes, it was part of it, that the grading was limited to four feet from existing grades. Just though, one of the areas that probably has the most amount of grading is Harper Court West and a couple of lots right by where it says Harper on sheet 15. Those aren't shown with a walkout basement. So by putting a walkout basement, you're saving five or six feet of cut right there. So I believe that we can substantially reduce the amount of grading that's shown on the plan. You're still going to have quite a bit of grading. I don't want to mislead you that there's still quite a bit required here, but I believe it can be substantially reduced.
Can I ask, I was very impressed by the number of boulders that were taken out of the Stonehill Church site, and I just wondered, are you anticipating a number of boulders will have to be removed from this site while we're talking about grading and
Well, the area where the houses are being constructed was mostly farmland, so no, I'm not anticipating a lot of boulders in that area.
But not deep plowing, probably, so...
Yeah, well, there's no, really not many boulders evident in that area. We do have, did have some limited soil testing in there, and the bedrock varied, but, you know, I think from a few feet to 10 feet plus. So depending on which lot you're on, you may run into rock or you may not.
Certainly it's one of the factors that might affect the grading and the changes that you'd have to make.
Any other questions, Alvin?
Yeah, just remembered something. Back to the affordable housing area. You say there's, what's there now, a house?
Yes, there's an existing house very near the Montgomery border, and as I think Dan testified to, the driveway is actually off of the lot in Montgomery Township.
Does that house, or the owner, is that the whole, do they own the whole three acres? That's with somebody's property?
Yes, it's part of this property. It's part of the overall development property.
It's actually 14 acres?
It's lot 14, which is one of the three lots that we're subdividing here.
So it's currently 14 acres?
Yeah. And you say it was farmland then, or what's there? I don't know anything about this. I don't know anything about the piece of property, so I guess I'm...
There's a house with a small lawn area and a driveway with a little parking area. But most of the site is wooded, but it's not, I think it was probably farmed. Randy, our environmental consultant, has better information on this, but I believe it was farmed maybe back in the '30s. So it has been regrowing in the woods for 80 years.
Has anybody been living there in the last 10 years?
Yes. I don't believe there's anybody living there now, though.
Go ahead.
The three-plus acre basin, have you, did you think at all about using permeable pavement for your pathways or using some kind of a green street, street design so that you could address more of the stormwater in a distributed fashion and closer to the homes rather than piping all of it down to a very big basin in the woods? These woods are important natural features of the ridge, and I really have a concern about creating a clearing and building a big berm. And I appreciate the desire to preserve as much of the woods as possible and use, you know, make use of the trees with stormwater management and whatnot. But I still feel, I'm curious about whether you considered other approaches that would be more distributed and closer to the existing homes.
We always consider using permeable pavement. However, I know Jack and the township will not allow us to use it for the roads. We potentially could use it for the driveways, which would help a little bit, but it's not going to be enough to eliminate the need for a basin. And if you try to put smaller basins, I believe you're going to end up clearing a lot more trees doing that than having one centralized basin. I mean, I think that can work well if you have an open site where you don't have to take down trees to have smaller basins closer to the source of the runoff. But in a case like this where it's wooded, you can't really create that without taking down the trees.
Did you think about channeling water to root systems of street trees that you'll be planting?
That would not meet the criteria that's dictated by the DEP and the township and the stormwater management manual.
Really?
Really.
I mean, I understand that, you know, green infrastructure on the street probably wouldn't be able to retain all the water that's needed for a 100-year storm, but, I mean, perhaps the combination of that and a smaller detention basin might work.
I mean, we can work with Jack and see what the township would allow, but I think you are going to need a single, I think a single basin is probably the most environmentally friendly solution here. Because as I say, if you start trying to put small basins, almost like rain garden-type structures, you're going to end up clearing a lot more trees than having a single basin created by a berm.
To be clear, I'm not talking about lots of basins necessarily. I mean things like, you know, disconnecting downspouts and having them go to vegetated swales instead of into pipes that go into a basin, and using curb cuts to enable water to come off the road and into the areas where you have streets or trees lining the road.
And I agree that...
And I think those are entirely consistent with DEP, BMP manual and...
Well, they're consistent with the manual, but you don't get any credit for them in terms of meeting the standards. That's the problem. And I think DEP right now realizes that and is looking at revising the standards. But as they stand today, you would not be able to meet the criteria with those kind of solutions. I mean, they encourage them, but they give you no credit for them.
I've heard that.
I just want to make one more comment about the building height, which is, and this came back to me because we talked about it a couple of months ago. While this application did come in before the new ordinance, the applications to build the structures will come in under the new ordinance, correct? Because we haven't received any applications for actual buildings yet.
That's correct.
Yeah. So you will be operating under...
Well, I mean, one of the concerns is I'm not sure that they can meet that new ordinance. I mean, just looking at one of the lots here, I think they have about eight or nine feet of, from the existing grade to the finished floor. And to lower that to four, I mean, I guess it could work, but I'm not sure, to make all the drainage in the street and everything work.
Well, I guess that's... Well, I guess that's what we're asking them to look at. And the other thing is, I was talking more about the building height rather than the height of the finished floor above grade. I was talking about the height of the ridge above grade and that that new definition for building height is going to apply as well.
Right, I'm just using finished floor because that's the number they give us. I mean, I'm sure the building height from the finished floor is going to be the typical, you know, 30 feet plus or minus. They are allowed to go to 35, you know, with the cluster still-
No, it's to the average grade. The building height is the average grade, not-
The clusters have a different height standard than the neighborhood character. It's, excuse me?
It's to the building plate.
Yeah, and it's-
But it doesn't tell how to measure height, so I would assume you would go to the zoning definition of how to measure height.
I would assume we'd have to use the average grade, but it would be to the plate, which is, and it gives you 30 feet to the building plate, which is pretty lenient, you know? That creates a high building, because that plate is like the top plate of the second floor, I would assume, if it's a two-story building.
And we agreed that was sort of an erroneous holdover.
Well, we should take care of that in the future.
Maybe we can take care of it before the building applications come in.
One more question, this one about specimen trees. In your memo, Jack, you mention the areas where natural vegetation and/or specimen trees are to remain. If they're, I assume that specimen trees are, well, why don't you tell me how they're defined? Is it based on diameter of the trunk?
We work with Dan and Taylor to determine that. I don't know that answer. I would work with the municipal arborist and Dan as far as determining that.
And when you're talking about them in your memo, do you mean there are specimen trees within the development area where the houses are going that would be preserved?
Well, potentially along the outer edge of it or where the utilities are going.
And how, when they're fenced, how, what, does the fence go out to the drip line?
The fence goes to the drip line unless there's, you know, actually construction next to it, and at a minimum, we go to 10 feet. There is, Shade Tree's been working on a formula of the minimum distance to the fence based on the size of the tree. So the larger the tree, the larger spacing you want. So there is literature out there and criteria as far as that. Just kind of as a rule of thumb, we use 10 feet as a minimum.
Yeah, and I think with a big specimen tree in these woods, I would hope we could go out to or near to the drip line.
Yep.
I would ask Dan if you could address Louise's question.
I think Jack, I think Jack actually did a pretty good job of answering that. The thing I would add to it is the 10 feet is a dimension that when that's been applied is really trying to address the buttressing roots of the tree. So a big tree, the buttressing roots of the tree are usually found within that 10 feet. So by staying greater than 10 feet away from the tree, you're trying to preserve those buttressing roots and try and afford the stability of the tree and preserve the stability of the tree. That's where the 10 feet comes in, and that's why that's the minimum. But optimally, you'd like to be as far away as possible, and you would use the diameter of the tree to try and make that determination. The drip line is a guide that is kind of based upon an antiquated idea that somehow the root system matches the canopy, which it doesn't, and it's really impossible to actually tell where the root system of the tree actually is. So, but they're guides. It's really hard to tell. Even if you follow the guides, there's a chance that you are disturbing the better root portion of the root system of the tree, because you really can't tell where it actually is.
And in terms of the definition of a specimen tree, can you elaborate on that?
I'm not sure what the, if there's a definition in the ordinance, I'm not really aware of it.
I'm not sure.
You know it when you see it?
Yeah. A specimen tree usually means a larger tree. As I indicated in my testimony, the area to be disturbed for the roads and utilities, not the individual lots, but the roads and utilities, but most likely, most of the individual lots, because they're in the area that has been more recently farmed, there was very few large trees in that area. The larger trees that you see when you drive by are in the areas of the open space to be preserved. I think there's some sycamores out there that you can really see from the road right now, and they are in an area that won't be disturbed from my recollection.
All right. I think if there are no more questions, thank you very much.
If you could, I just wanted to ask you one question. I can't wait to leave because of the examination, but I just wanted to be sure we were not seeing a wave in the background.
I now call Mr. Randy Curtis.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So I just want to reaffirm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
My name is Randy S. Curtis. I'm the principal of Novellus Environmental Group LLC and a professional geologist.
Mr. Curtis, what is your business address?
15 Quaker Road, Princeton Junction, New Jersey, 08550.
Can you please describe your educational and professional background for the board?
I have a BS in geology from Rider College and a master's in geology from the University of Cincinnati. I have over 30 years of environmental consulting experience in New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, California, Ohio, and Puerto Rico and Arizona. My expertise includes three major fields. Well, first is the oversight of site remediation, activities pertaining to soil and groundwater. Secondly, land use, development, review, and environmental permitting such as wetlands, coastal development, and waterfront development. And lastly, the preparation of environmental impact statements. Of environmental impact statements.
Could I just ask the women's company to speak up, but I have a feeling we're missing one of them.
Sure. I've been an adjunct instructor at Rider University since 1999, teaching environmental geology, earth materials lab, and oceanography. Also employed by Ginsburg Development Companies from 2004 to 2008, managing land acquisition projects and municipal approvals in New Jersey and New York State. Actually, while I was at Ginsburg Development Companies, I developed a township-wide GIS-based assessment for looking for raw land and raw properties, overlaying aerials, wetlands, streams, topography, and looking for properties that fit our business model. I've also provided expert testimony in environmental matters in several municipalities, including Reddington, West Windsor, Kingwood, and Lawrence.
Madam Chair, I offer Mr. Curtis as an expert in geology, environmental assessments, and permitting relating to land development.
We accept his credentials.
Thank you. And for the record, I also like to enter Mr. Curtis's resume into the record. Actually, I want to do, I'm sorry for this little housekeeping, but first I want to do Mr. Brown's. I forgot to do his resume. Let's mark that A2, dated 4/19. And then Mr. Curtis's. Find it, I got too many papers here. And we'll mark this A3, today's date, 4/19. Thank you, Mr.
Yes.
Have you visited the site? That's the subject of this application.
I have.
And have you reviewed the plans and other documentation submitted in connection with this application?
Yes.
Did you examine the Princeton ordinances, the pertinent portions of the master plan and Princeton's natural resource inventory in connection with this application?
I did.
Have you reviewed pertinent environmental databases of public agencies such as the NJDDP in connection with this application?
Yes.
Have you read the full environmental impact assessment that was prepared by James Kyle for Landwin and submitted as part of this application?
Yes.
Are you in agreement with the information and conclusions in the report regarding the nature and extent of the environmental features on the site?
Generally, there are two minor discrepancies that we can talk about as we proceed forward.
Okay, thank you. Independent of your review of Mr. Kyle's report, have you reached your own professional opinions and conclusions regarding the proposed cluster developments' impacts upon the environment?
I have.
Can you start by describing the nature of the site's environmental features for the board, please?
Sure.
And again, as you go through, you're going to be referring to a number of slides. Please identify each slide for the board and the record.
Sure, this is our slide number 17, the wetland for Thompson Woods. Again, as previously discussed, 6.99 acres of the land of the tract is wetlands, and the wetland LOI that was issued in September of 2016, the applicant's wetland engineer provided a report dated July in 2015, and subsequent meetings with DEP representatives on site in March and August of 2016 memorialized the findings and established the LOI submission. So in summary, there's 6.99 acres of wetlands on the property. The wetland transition area is dedicated at 50 feet, which supports the absence of threatened endangered species. Threatened endangered species would require a transition area of up to 150 feet. What the applicant's proposing, as shown on his slide, is a boulevard-type entrance, which is strategically located with areas that minimize the exposure or impact to wetland areas, as shown here. And there's also, this is about 0.04 acres of wetland disturbance, and again, 0.05 acres of wetland disturbance associated with the utility easements. Now, the LOI just does mention the potential presence of vernal pools on the property, and potential for vernal pools. And New Jersey DEP has identified two vernal pools located down in this region. They're not shown in the plan, but ones located approximately here. They're both in the southeast corner of the site.
Mr. Curtis, can you just explain what a vernal pool is?
Sure. A vernal pool is a spring-type habitat that holds water during the springtime for amphibians and reptiles for their activities. So these two vernal pools that are dedicated, shown by DEP, are located in an area approximately about seven, over seven acres of area of wetlands and upland areas. So this over seven acres of land should be, should be large enough to be protective of those vernal pools moving ahead, and in addition, it's part of the open space that's going to be preserved in perpetuity. As previously shown, this is the slope analysis map. This is our slide number 18. Again, the areas of slopes greater than 25% are shown as a dark blue, and the area mostly shown where the proposed cluster subdivision will go, areas less than 7% in general of slopes. Now, just to clarify, there was a question earlier tonight about the slopes as described in the environmental impact statement prepared by others. That environmental impact statement used 20% to dedicate or to show as steep slopes, so I think that's where the discrepancy might be. That's where a lot of these slopes that are shown as 20%, the medium blue, are not steep So getting to threatened endangered species, this is our slide number 21. This is a screen capture dated March 28, 2019, of the NJDEP Landscape Project Viewer 3.3. The New Jersey DEP Landscape Project maintains habitat patches associated with species, and the ranks go from one to five, with five being federally listed species, four being state endangered, and three being state threatened. As you can see on our tract, especially when the area where this cluster subdivision will go, there's actually no rank. This is where the old homestead is, and then where the old agricultural properties are, there's a rank of one. The rest of the tract, which is shown as a rank of two, just tan in color, is shown as Cooper's Hawk habitat. Now, Cooper's Hawk is shown ubiquitously on our site and within the region, within these tan habitat patches. Now, Cooper's Hawk was reranked from a state threatened three to a state ranked, to a rank of two in February of 2012. Here is the actual press release dated February 23, 2012, adopting, redlisting the Cooper's Hawk from a state three to a rank of two. And this is slides, page one is slide 19, page two is slide number 20. Now-
Box turtle? Yes, that's right. Correct.
Yeah. The other change from the environmental impact statement that was prepared by others lists box turtle that was shown on a previous version of the Landscape Project. This Landscape Project 3.3, which is the current project, shows the absence of wood, of box turtle. Doesn't exist on the property anymore. Now, I had numerous discussions with representatives from the DEP, especially the individual who manages the Landscape Project Viewer, and it's indicated to me that it's probably likely that the box turtle citation was deleted because it was most likely observed prior to 1980 and wasn't re-observed. So the only species of interest that the DEP sees are the Cooper's Hawk, again, which is on our site but ubiquitously throughout the region. Now, it's true that the mostly, the site is mostly composed currently of forested areas, forested areas, forested wetlands. Historically, though, portions of the property have been, have been used for agricultural purposes back to 1931. Now, this is our slide number 22 in the PowerPoint, and this shows a 1931 aerial map, and you can see, and we've overlaid the subdivision, cluster subdivision, on the 1931 map, and the portions of the site that are hatched, 35 acres on the eastern portion and 10.9 acres of the northwestern corner. And Mr. McGowan, you can see that this is where the agricultural utilization of that smaller lot for. This is our slide number 23. This is a 1974 aerial map, again, showing that 29.1 acres, the vast majority of where the clustered subdivision is still being agriculturally used, although some of it might be moving into successional growth. This is our slide number 24. This is a 1984 aerial map. Again, 28.5 acres of where the vast majority of our clustered subdivision will be located is starting to move into successional growth, so wasn't old, the absence of old wooded forest. Sure. Starting to move into successional growth. Now, with respect to critical habitat discussions that the natural resource inventory and other commenters have made, given there are old growth forests on the site, the critical habitat with respect to these woodlands is- habitat with respect to these woodlands is probably most likely related to the former state threatened rank of the Cooper's Hawk. And now it's a rank-two species. So therefore, there's no habitat patches of state threatened or state endangered species or federally listed species on our tract.
I'm sorry, Mr. Curtis, are you finished with that point?
I am.
Okay. So, Mr. Curtis, have you examined the proposed project's impacts on the environmental features you just described?
Yes.
Could you please describe for the board the impacts and what measures are being employed to minimize and mitigate these impacts?
Sure. To examine potential water quality impacts to the watershed, the unnamed tributary Van Horn Brook within the Millstone River watershed, I prepared what's called a non-point source loading analysis for pre and post-development of the site. So what I did is I looked at the total suspended solid loads pre and post-development, and using the non-point source loading rates from the New Jersey DEP Stormwater Best Practices Manual. And in addition, I used the TSS, Total Suspended Solid Removal Rate of 80%, using the applicant's engineer designing the infiltration basin. Due to the infiltration basin, there'll be a reduction of TSS to the watershed by approximately 18% post-development. So this area, which is partly in successional growth, transitional growth, according to the BMP loading rates, this stormwater will be captured, taken down to the infiltration basin, and 80% of the TSS load will be maintained within the basin, so overall reduction of I've also reviewed the applicant's engineer's stormwater management report prepared and dated April 2, 2018. During the design of the basin, soil logs were completed to support the proposed infiltration detention basin. Soils at the proposed basin were mostly composed of silt loams, clay loams, silt loams, clay loams, and the seasonal high water table was located at depths greater than 26 inches below grade. We're talking about soil borings, four soil borings in this location. The applicant's engineer also performed eight tube permeometer tests to show the permeometer rates that were acceptable at the proposed basin, ranging between 1.09 inches per hour and 9.68 inches per hour. The NJDEP BMP manual requires a minimum and maximum of 0.05 inches per hour and 10 inches per hour, respectively. Also, the NJDEP BMP manual requires seasonal high water table equal to or no greater than two feet below grade. Two feet below grade. The applicant's engineer has proposed the use of a detention infiltration basin to comply with the New Jersey Stormwater Management Regulations and Section 10B-227-4 and Section 10B-227.5 of Princeton Municipal Ordinance. The applicant proposes to utilize the requirement two, which is 100% of the difference between the sites' pre and post-two-year runoff volumes that will be infiltrated to comply with the water quantity component. The applicant will utilize the detention infiltration basin to achieve a reduction of TSS by 80% to comply with the water quality requirement. Thus, the proposed stormwater management plan for the property is protected post-development. Now, while it's true that approximately one and a half acres of the older growth forest is going to be impacted for the use of berm for the stormwater management basin, the remaining portions of the basin will be un-impacted and will remain forested. In fact, the 3.5 acres of detention infiltration basin is approximately 3.86% of the entire In addition, while it's true that approximately three acres of the northern end of the residential development, that forested area will be impacted, the remaining areas on the south and central component area will be, is areas that were formerly used as agricultural land. Thus, the applicant's residential cluster design will be respectful of the older forested areas and will be protective of proposed open space and forested land in perpetuity. Potential impacts to steep slopes, as previously discussed, the property has slopes ranging from zero to greater than 25%. Yes? Sure.
Make sure you identify the slides.
As previously discussed, we're looking right now at the slope analysis map, slide number 27. And again, the proposed clustered subdivision is located in areas with slopes under 7% and no slopes greater than 25% are being impacted either by the construction of the cluster subdivision or these utility easements. Therefore, the property will be protective of steep slopes post-development. Now, there has been some additional discussions this evening about bedrock and depth of bedrock. I actually went on to the NJDEP web viewer this afternoon to confirm that there's no outcrops that are shown on our site, no bedrock outcrops. And in fact, the proposed development will be located on soils classified as Neshamani, Mount Lucas, and Lawrenceville soils. Review of the USDA Official Soil Series Information for these show that bedrock is located at depths greater than 60 inches, which indicates a deep and well-established soil horizon but no outcrops of bedrock units.
Mr. Curtis, did you review the proposed project for conformance with the ecological and environmental standards set forth in Section 10B-226 of the Princeton Ordinance pertaining to site plan applications?
I did.
And can you please set forth your opinion on whether or not the proposed development meets these standards?
Sure, there's four specific standards. The first one is the project result in minimal impairment to aquifers and other water supplies. The proposed development will utilize a public water supply system and not onsite wells or the use of septic systems, being protected by the aquifers on the property. Also, the requirement, the development will comply with NJDEP post-development groundwater recharge requirements.
Kind of slow, loser.
Also, the development will comply with NJDEP post-development groundwater recharge I'm trying to get my testimony in before 11 o'clock, I'm sorry. Section number two, result in the degradation of unique or irreplaceable land types and critical areas. The proposed development will utilize areas that were formerly agricultural areas, with the exception of the three acres of alder forest along the northern portion of the residential lots. At the end of the project, there will be 67.4 acres of protected open space in perpetuity. Item number three, conform with existing geologic and topographic features to the end that the most appropriate use of land is encouraged. The proposed development pursuant to the clustering provisions of the Princeton Land Use Ordinance will, with located and minimize overall disturbance to the property, including the lack of disturbances slopes greater than 25%. It's protected to the groundwater supplies by using a public water supply and the use of an infiltration basin and surface water quality, reducing the overall TSS to the watershed after development. Item number four, cause minimal interference with natural functioning of plant and animal processes. The proposed development will utilize areas that were formerly agricultural areas, with the exception of the three acres along the northern portion of the residential lots. At the end of the project, there will be 67.4 acres of protected open space in perpetuity and will provide protective long-term for natural functioning of plants and animal processes. The applicant's also acknowledges the fact that they've removed 650 trees and plan on conforming with Princeton's Land Use Ordinance with respect to replacing those trees.
And moving on now to Section 10B-226B, there are a couple of standards, again, that fall into your expertise. I'd like your opinion on.
Sure, the first is...
Section 10B-226B, Mr. Curtis, have you had an opportunity to review the standards within that section of the ordinance?
I have.
And can you give your opinion on whether this project satisfies that criteria?
Yes, there are two specific requirements: scenic and historic archaeological and landmark sites. See on the slide ahead of you is our slide number 28. This is actually a screen capture, March 29, 2019, of the New Jersey DEP Historic Preservation Office, location for historic sites. Our tract is located in yellow in the central portion of the property. You're shown, located in the central portion of the property, central portion of the slide. And you'll see that I have turned on and activated historic districts and historic sites, and they're designated in yellow, or red, or blue, or green around the perimeter, but not, there's no historic sites on our site or immediately adjacent to our tract. And then the last requirement, there's a protective of waterways. The property is located within the watershed that is designated as freshwater to non-trout, so there's no category-one streams on our tract. And the proposed development will not disturb any waterway corridors on the property.
Mr. Curtis, have you reached an opinion as to whether the proposed development has been designed to be protective of the natural features that you have just described?
I have.
Please provide that opinion and the basis for reaching same.
Sure. In my opinion, the proposed development has been strategically designed and located at a sensitive to natural environs, based on the following nine points. The first point is that the tract is located in the sewer service area for Mercer County's wastewater management plan, and the sewer, sanitary sewer, will be connected and driven to and conveyed to Stony Brook Regional Sewage Authority. Therefore, there won't be the need for onsite septic systems, which might impact groundwater quality. Secondly, the site is going to be using public water supply supplied by New Jersey American Water Company. Therefore, the use of the need for onsite individual water wells will be protective of the aquifer post-development. Again, in looking at the current Landscape Project 3.3, there won't be any impact of threatened or endangered species. Fourth, the vast majority of the location where the new proposed clustered subdivision will be located is being strategically located in areas that were formerly disturbed or Five, the stormwater quality to the watershed will be improved post-development as the pre and post-non-point source loading analysis that I prepared shows there'll be a reduction of TSS to the watershed post-development. Six, the surface water quality will be protected. Again, the applicant's engineer has complied with the Stormwater Management Regulations for water quality and water quantity with respect to the stormwater basin on-site. Seven, the site's utilizing Princeton's Cluster Zoning Ordinance, which encourages the preservation of open space and lessening impacts to natural areas. Eight is that the open space path approximately one mile in length will be an attribute, a positive attribute, to the site. And lastly, number nine, there'll be a dedicated lot for future affordable housing to assist Princeton in her fair share need. Therefore, in my opinion, the proposed residential cluster development has been prepared by combining, one, the municipal regulations focusing on natural resource protection via cluster developments, and, two, locating the proposed low-density residential development within former disturbed or agricultural areas and preserving large tracts of open space. In addition, the proposed residential cluster development has been designed with the environmentally related sensitivities, including stormwater management and drainage, protecting steep slopes, and preserving a significant amount of open space in perpetuity.
So, Mr. Curtis, I have one final question. So, based on your evaluation of all the environmental information concerning the subject property, including the natural resource inventory and other available data, is it your conclusion that the residential cluster will not have an unreasonably adverse impact upon the area?
Yes.
I have no further questions for Mr. Curtis.
Board members, do you have questions for Mr. Curtis? Anyone? Go ahead.
I just want to be clear on one thing that you said, that the clearing of the area to create the berm would leave the surrounding forest un-impacted, that basically it will have no impact on the forest around it. Is that your testimony?
Let's go back. Yes, the area of disturbance is the berm. There is an infiltration component along the lower edges of the berm, but the remaining portions of the forested will be minimally impacted.
Are you saying by water or by the...
The trees won't be, the trees are not going to be removed.
So they, right, so a clearing is created where there was forest. And my layperson's understanding is that when you create a clearing of any size in a forest, it affects the surrounding forest to a considerable degree. So I'm just wondering whether you're disagreeing with that or what your opinion about that
I'm saying that the trees will be removed where the berm is, and the remaining forested areas will be, not, the trees won't be removed.
Just to follow up on that, so also, I guess, to, I guess, create the pipes for the drainage, you also will have to clear a path. I'm guessing that's that dashed line...
That's here.
From the development to the berm. Is it, is it, is it like a swale, or is that pipes?
That's subsurface piping.
And so that would need to be, that strip would need to be cleared as well?
That, might be a question for Jeff Brown to answer.
Well, maybe we'll wait for him to come back.
The answer is yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You need to get heavy equipment in there to clear the berm area and to bring the fill in. I mean, there's going to be a lot of disturbance.
Right. The other question is, in terms of creating the entrance road, which will be crossing wetlands, will there be culverts to allow the hydrology to function naturally, or will there be just a road covering it? Culverts, will there be? Or will there be roads just covering the wetlands?
No, I believe, I think Jeff should answer that question, but I believe there are going to be culverts. This, the location of... This, the location of this boulevard will not impact this seven or seven and a half acre lot area to the north.
So, water will be able to flow naturally as it currently does?
Yes.
All right, anyone else?
I do have one more question. You may or may not know the answer to this, so I'm not sure it's for you or for someone else, but do you know what permits will be required for this project from DEP?
Sure. The boulevard entrance will require a GP10, General Permit 10, for a roadway. The impacts for the utility lines in the wetlands will require a general permit two. So, both general permits.
Could you repeat the second part?
The, there's, I'll repeat it all. There's two general permits required for this wetland crossing. It's GP10 for the boulevard and a GP2, General Permit two, for, for the utility impacts-
Okay.
-associated with the wetlands.
Like the drainage and sewage, or I guess-
That's right.
Anyone else?
Mr. Brown's returned, if you want him to answer those two questions.
I think we're good on that question.
Okay. And it's, let's see, it's approaching 11 o'clock, is that right, Ms. Gurney? Yes. Are we going to carry this meeting?
We still have one more.
And we're going to need an extension from the applicant.
Eileen, do you have a date yet to which it will be carried?
We have some conflicts, and I don't know how the hearing is going to proceed. Some of our staff is not available for next week, so it's up to the board to decide how they want to proceed with the application. Some of it without some of our staff, or we just go everything into the first meeting in May. That's your decision.
Mr. LaTitia, are you sort of listening to-
If I heard Ms. Gurney correctly, she's saying that there's some conflicts with, I guess, the ability of staff to be here next week? Is that what we were looking at? April 11?
And then our next meeting is, is not till the first week of May?
April, right, April 11. I have conflicts with staff. I tried to get a quorum for the 25th. That's, that's tight, but I, I also have other staff conflicts. If we don't, if we're, if we want everybody in one place, then it'll have to be May 2.
I think we probably want to have the staff here to listen, hear the testimony. I mean, one of the reasons we have a court reporter here is that there will be transcripts available, but we probably would need your staff here to respond to, to issues as they arise, so. So I guess it's May then. Unless there could be another date we can find in between, which I don't think so.
Ms. Gurney? I, I just have a request. There's an exhibit I'd like to see if it wouldn't be too much trouble to put it together, which is a map showing the breakdown of preserved open space versus regular common space.
And I, I don't think we received the stormwater management plan, but would it be possible to get that sent to us, or how's that work?
There was the stormwater management plan?
Yeah.
I don't think we got it.
We have copies of it, there's just not copies for all of the board members.
Okay.
Is it digitally available? I would have to get it in person.
Okay. Anything else on your wish list? All right. So, we're good for the first week of the meeting?
Will the May meeting be available? We'll have it all night?
Yes.
Okay. So, so perhaps we can get to the, the public at the next meeting as well, I think, right?
And, and we have the extension till May 3?
And Tom? An extension to May 3?
Yes.
Okay. And just for members of the public, there won't be any further noticing, the, the hearing will be carried to May 2.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Live to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Here.